Tonight I'll open a meeting, a city commission meeting for August 3rd, 2015. I'll call the meeting to order. First thing on our agenda is the invocation. I will lead us in invocation. Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for all the blessings you've given us. We ask your special presence on this commission tonight that we deliberate your will to the benefit of the City of El Dorado. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
All right, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, personal appearances.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I wanted to come this afternoon, this evening, and visit about something that happened a week ago that I think all of our citizens need to be, pay more, a little more attention to when they're out on the roads. First off, I'll, I'll start off the story with, I was out of town Monday and Tuesday, and through an email group that I'm a part of, I got an email that visited, that talked about an accident that occurred on 470 in the Kansas City metro area, where a KDOT truck with an attenuator on the back, as well as an arrowboard, was struck from behind in a construction zone. Fortunately, the truck did exactly what it was supposed to have done. It absorbed the, the impact from the oncoming car. No one in the construction zone was injured. As for the driver of the vehicle, I don't know how they turned out, but fortunately, no construction workers, no state workers were injured. And I thought, wow, well, I would hate to have been on that crew. About thirty minutes after I read that, I got a call from Lieutenant Stewart from the Police Department that said one of our employees had been hit by a vehicle on West Central Avenue at Emporia Street. The young man has been painting curbs throughout town. He's done a very good job. He's probably one of the best curb painters and one of the best summertime employees we've had in a long, long time. Unfortunately, he was in the, the fatal funnel, if you will, there at Emporia, where the construction started for the sewer line project, as well as just funneling the cars into one lane for that eastbound traffic. He had his work zone set up correctly. His cones were out. There were advanced warning signs out for the other construction zone that warned drivers that the left lane was going to merge into the right, and that there was going to be one lane. The gator that he used to get from point A to point B was in between him and his work zone. So, for a seventeen-year-old kid, hey, he had, he'd done a great job of setting up his work zone. Unfortunately, some, a driver that, no one knows who it was, because it was a hit-and-run, wasn't paying attention, clipped his cones narrowly missing the, the gator, and clipped him on the shoulder. Spun him around, did not knock him down, didn't run over him, but yet he was still hit by that vehicle. So, lots of concern in our department about what could we do differently? What, what could we do? What did we do? And what should we do in the future to protect our, our employees? I'll tell you that coming home Tuesday, we were in contact with his parents and with city staff, making sure that everything was fine. He was back to work the very next day. Finished up the corner of Emporia and Central, and went right on to what he was doing. On my way home Tuesday, I get another email. Another KDOT truck up on 470 was hit in the rear again this morning. Two accidents in the same work zone, both damaging KDOT vehicles, both drivers that were being inattentive in construction zones. So, while ours had a great outcome, ours had a much better outcome than it could have had potentially. The driver, if, if the driver knew he hit someone, that makes it even worse. But yet, everybody said, well, it was probably a texting driver. Well, when I talked to Herb, I said, you know, I don't, I don't know that I believe it. Maybe it was a texting driver, maybe someone eating. That's, that's another, it's almost as dangerous as texting, being on the phone. But I, I guess, in, in setting up barricades and detours this weekend for the Frontier Western Celebration Parade and those, there are so many times that we're out there, whether it's the Water Department or the engineering guys or Public Works, just a trash man about picking up trash. We're out there on the streets. We have on bright fluorescent clothing, so you can see us. Some say that makes us a little bigger target. I say I hope it keeps people away from us. But I would just ask that, that everybody take just, just pay really close attention in those, those construction zones. And, and if you see those guys out, there may not be cones and barricades and everything set up. It may be the guy out picking up trash. It could be as simple as the kid painting curbs on the street. We've got jobs to do out in the, out in the general public, out on the roadways. It's one of the most dangerous jobs that there is out there. And, and Tuesday, Monday's, Monday's deal right here in El Dorado. It didn't really hit very, very close to home when it was two hundred miles away. And, yeah, they hit a truck, you know, the truck did what it was supposed to. But when, when I get that phone call Monday morning that said it's one of your guys that's been hit by a car, that brings it right into perspective. That brings it very close to home. And fortunately, like I say, our employees are all trained in how to set up work zones, but it does not stop the people that don't pay attention when they're driving. So, I would just ask that, that everybody pay really close attention to when they're in those zones, whether, whether you see anybody in those zones or not. You never know when somebody's gonna walk out from behind a barricade, when, uh, when they're gonna step out of a truck that you don't think there's anybody around. I would just ask that everybody pays really close attention, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. That was a scary moment for everybody, and it, it happened. Ask that all of our citizens pay attention to work zones. Any other public appearance? Thank you. If they're a little unscheduled, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Linda Jolly with El Dorado Inc., and as you're aware, we made presentation to KDOT last Friday morning. And I just wanted to bring you a copy of the handout that we used as part of our takeaway piece. And then I gave you a table of contents which lists the support letters that we received from around the region that went with our presentation. And I have provided a scanned copy of those this evening shortly before I got here for Scott and Herb to pass those along if you're interested. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Linda on that? I'll, I'll share that Linda and myself and Scott and Herb, along with Representative from Grizzly Development, made that presentation Friday morning at KDOT. It seemed well-received, but they won't, we were one of seven. We won't know, supposed to know this month what their decision is on that project.
And we did, we will be providing some additional information about the project to them tomorrow, so.
Okay, good.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Exciting. Thank you, Linda. Thank you. All right. Public comment, time for public comment. Anybody in the audience have a public comment? Seeing none, we'll move forward to consent agenda. If everybody's had a chance to have their consent agenda, which is in the packet, which is minutes from the last couple of meetings, and allocations. Everybody's had a chance to read the minutes and look through the allocations? Appropriations, excuse me, not allocations. Appropriations.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Item number three on our agenda is the project number forty, four seventy-one, Clink, resurfacing of Central from Summit, Emporia and Griffith to the Walnut River Bridge.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, bids were received on this project. This is a, um, project that ties into a geometric improvement project that you awarded the low bid at a month or so at, at a meeting. That's why it's kind of broken up, and you see the Summit, Emporia section. The geometric improvement, which will be adding a turn lane from Central, on Central from Topeka to Denver, will tie into this. Also, we will be milling overlaying Central Avenue from Griffith to the Walnut River Bridge. The engineers' estimate for the project was three hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. APAC Kansas bid was two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty cents. And Cornejo and Sons bid was three hundred and six thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. We're asking you that you consider awarding the bid to APAC Kansas. Funds for this project will include reimbursement from KDOT by the city. Since this is on a state highway, they do participate on the project up to fifty percent of the construction and construction engineering cost. And construction engineering costs are costs associated by myself or my staff for doing inspection and testing on the project. The remainder of the funds will come from sales tax money.
Now, is Griffith Street the one that runs by the animal shelter and by the bald diamonds?
Griffith is, yeah, right out here at the corner by Sunny Stop and Dairy Queen.
Okay, any more questions for Scott? When will the work start?
Hopeful sometime in the beginning of September. And the reason this comes to you with a little bit of delay is we went ahead and made the sewer improvements on Central. We, we found those issues out there that we needed to take care of. So, we held the contractor off on that until, of course, that work could be done. We didn't want patches in a brand-new street, so. So, bear with us a little bit on that section of Central where those sewer repairs have taken place. There'll be some temporary patching until those crews can come in and do a milling overlay and finish it off. Hopeful sometime in September, though.
How long is, what's the duration of the project?
Honestly, it'll be maybe a week, two weeks. It'll move very quick. They'll bring the mill in and mill off two inches of asphalt, and then be right behind it, lay an asphalt right behind. And then, then they'll come in following that and, and restripe it. The work at Topeka in Central will take a little longer. We have a little realignment of the curb to lengthen the taper to go from a five-lane section of roadway down to a four-lane as you're heading west. So, that'll take a little bit longer, but that shouldn't impact traffic too much.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion on the commission? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that APAC Kansas submitted the lowest and best bid for project number four seventy-one of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty cents, and was under the engineer's estimate. The city manager will be directed to award the contract to said contractor, providing that the company furnished the proper bonds.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item number four on our agenda is the Westar franchise agreement. This is an effort that we are, this is part of our budget process to, for franchise, increase in franchise fees for the, for the utilities.
Correct, Mayor, and this is from Westar Energy. Raises the franchise fee from five percent to six percent. The ordinance is the same as the last one, other than the change in franchise fees.
Great. What about the other utilities, Herb? What about Kansas Gas and?
Working on them all. KGS, their company preferred is to limit it at five, but it's not a written policy, and it's just their policy. So, we're working on that. I think that'll be the next one you see. We have to have more discussions with Cox and AT&amp;T. The cable industry didn't like negotiating individual franchise agreements with all the cities in the country. So, they got the United States of America to do, want one. And then Kansas did one for all of us, and CAP did it five. And so, that'll be, those two will be a little bit more difficult. Now, AT&amp;T has two services. They have phone and video. So, the video would be under the same as Cox's, the six percent on that. The phone services should be easier, too, and we're just waiting to get hold of them.
When will this change go into effect?
I'm gonna, I think that they thought it'd take ninety days to go into place, so, yet this year.
What's the ordinance number?
S thirteen forty-six.
I move that ordinance number S thirteen forty-six is ordinance authorizing a change in the franchise agreement with Kansas Gas Electric Company doing business as Westar Energy and the City of El Dorado, Kansas, for the purpose of increasing fees collected for distribution of the electrical energy and paid directly to the City of El Dorado from five percent to six.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? And then we'll have roll call.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Moved and, I think our agenda, I guess it's new business, and I'll start new business with a couple of things. First of all, I guess, as we, as we kind of finish up this, this franchise, and we're not able to get the franchise tax for Cox and AT&amp;T, how does that affect our budget?
We will, we'll internally control that, Mayor. So that even if you, when you approve the budget, we spend based on revenues. And so, if revenues don't come in as projected, then we'll self-regulate and trim internally. And so, all the, um, if, I guess if, and if you're asking about outside agencies, my intent would be to pay them. I think that the commission wanted them to have a conversation about who's doing what. I, I think that's already started. I anticipate it that'll go forward. And my anticipation would be to pay them and cut themselves, cut, and internally cut the budget somewhere else.
Well, I guess I just want to make sure I understand that what was published did not include these. That was just a mill levy published for the, for our budget. Is that correct? If we're not, I just want to make sure that, that that is correct in terms of what, where anticipated income is and where we were getting it.
The finance director published the budget. She sent it off today for publication. It is based on the increase in franchise fees and making the payment out to the outside agencies. Right now, there was not a mill levy increase.
Right, right. Okay. Other new business?
I'll just say real quickly, thank you to everyone involved with Main Street and the Frontier Western Celebration. Made it down there briefly a few times, and it was a decent turnout, good turnout. And I know there's a lot of volunteers that put in a lot of work to make that all happen, so thank you to all of them. And then I also, Herb, I know you sent us all an email, I think with the proposed MOU from the Y. And I think you asked us to kind of review that ourselves and get back to you with our thoughts. And I know that I didn't, so I was maybe reminding everyone, and then.
And the, I think the process will be is that just kind of be gathering your thoughts.
Yeah.
It'll go to the rec advisory this month.
Okay.
And then after that, it'll come to you, and you ought to see it on the agenda at the beginning of September, is what I think.
Oh, okay, cool. So, that'll go to the rec board, and then it'll come?
Right.
Good deal. Thank you.
But that is the draft. What I sent you was the draft that came out. And, um, and like I said in my manager's report, it looks to me like it's a good first step and, and just reaffirmates both the city and the Y's desire to work together where we can.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I think that's all I had.
I don't have anything.
I don't think we, we won't meet again when we, or when we meet again, school will be in session, won't it, Kendra?
Starts the nineteenth.
So, well, but just gonna remind people to keep your eye on those school zones, 'cause they're gonna be flashing Air Force Two off along. The little ones will be out, and a lot of, probably a lot of first-timers, so. And especially after what Brad talked about, even though it in the construction zone, people get used to not having to slow down through those school zones. So, everybody watch for them. And that's all I got.
I've got a couple of things I'd like to, to get the feel of the commission on while we're together. I've heard a lot of complaints about trucks being downtown. And I know Main Street's expressed that concern, and they've, they have tried to integrate that into some, to a streetscape project and kind of what can be done with the downtown and the trucks that miss the truck route. Is it, I guess I'd like to ask that we consider some sort of advisory panel that can give us, an ad hoc that can study this situation and give us recommendations as a commission? Maybe look at our signage? As I drove around, I think our signage in some cases is, is questionable in terms of being able to see it large enough and see it in time, in time. Could we, could we talk about some of the, the industry users, the trucking industry that, working with our staff to come up with some recommendations? What's this, what's the commission think about doing that? Is it not uncommon for us to have an advisory group focus on an issue?
Well, we talked, we've talked about this, what, for the last couple of years? It's been an issue. And I thought that Brad told us that all of our signs that mark our truck routes are at or larger than KDOT requirements, if I, if I remember correctly.
And I think, and I think, but maybe to your point, I have a meeting, not this week, but next, with John Prather about truck routes generally. And so, I think that John has kind of created something similar to what you're talking about.
Okay.
I mean, you can do it, but it, maybe it'd be more prudent just to hear what John has to say, 'cause I think part of that is about truck routes and safety. And I think, to Nick's point, we've absolutely talked about it. Our signage is, I think, without, without, everywhere, we have bigger, more signs than are required. However, we still have lots of trucks downtown, so no matter, no matter what.
And we raise the fines.
We raise the fines. And so, yeah, I think that, from what everything I've heard is that you have quite a few drivers that are, that are driving by their cellphone, the GPS in their cellphone, and they're not putting on truck route. And so, part of it's not paying attention. And, and then we know, we've had drivers count on us not catching them. And I mean, have heard the conversations over CBs. Oh, we'll talk them out of it and drive through town. And so, um, I think all, I think most drivers that are familiar with El Dorado do what's right. But John Prather wanted to visit with me about it.
Okay.
And so, I'm planning on that next week. And I think it's Wednesday, if I remember right.
Okay.
I know what he wants to talk to you about, but I, I'm not gonna say anything about it yet, 'cause he's put together a task force. And our company's one of them that's on the task force, along with the refinery.
And so, yeah, that's, so I'm not sure that John isn't doing what you want. And it, and again, it has to do with, uh, I, I think that John is, I mean, we always, we talk to John all the time about getting through town and what he thinks. I mean, they have a bunch of trucks.
Yep.
So, I think that's, I think it's being done, and, and I guess I'll know for sure by the next time you meet.
Okay, thank you. The other one I have is along the same lines as a task, task force. And I guess, I mean, we kind of had this discussion among the commit, among us in June, heading up to the Fourth of July, making sure we were all ready for the calls we'd get during the fireworks season. Now that that's a month behind us, can we look at that while there's not any emotion tied to it? Same kind of task force? Can we involve some citizens that are pro and con and come back with something that we can all confidently say we support? What's the commission think about that?
Other, and the only, I mean, we can certainly do it, but it's an annual event. And generally, commissions, once they've visited something, unless something has changed, don't want to visit it annually. And so, you haven't visited it, but it's visited annually by this board.
Yeah.
At least it has been for ten years.
And I guess I'd like to, and I, I get that, and I, I've watched it get visited annually. Is there any way of moving that discussion to the fall rather than during the emotion of the season? Help that a little bit, I don't know.
And if we're gonna do that, I feel, if we're gonna have discussion about it, we need to make a decision shortly after the first of the year. So, these groups that use those firecracker stands for their fundraisers can have enough time to, to determine whether or not they want to do that. Especially like if we're gonna cut, cut the time they can be sold, or that could, 'cause it's very expensive to put a fireworks stand out there. And they may want to take another look at that and not put all their fundraising efforts. 'Cause I, I think some of them, that's their big fundraiser of the year. They may not want to put their fundraising efforts into that fireworks stand. So, I think we owe it to them. If we, if we are gonna do this, we need to do it in the fall and come to a decision as quick as we can.
Yeah, the high school uses it for their winter park.
Yeah, so.
I know that, and it would be my intent to be done with this by, so that it could be acted on first of January or before. And I, I would envision that some of those, those that are involved with the fundraisers and have the fireworks stands, as well as, I mean, they get included in the discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from them, also.
Yeah. And what's it take to get something like that started?
Two more head nods. And so, I mean, we, I, we can absolutely do it. I think the first thing we'll do is, we'll get, we'll tell you what has been done in the past and kind of characterize that for you. We've done surveys.
We have got youth commission. We've got survey stuff, and we do a lot of the literature, I think, every year.
And so, I mean, I guess I think the first, I guess, I'm not sure. I wouldn't go back to a survey of some kind. Now, you're gonna limit it to, we put it on our website, so you're gonna limit it to people that view our website. I guess we could put it in the paper as well. I guess we could put it in the paper as well, and they could do paper. And let people contact you, because, no.
I don't want to see it eliminated.
I'm not, I'm not advocating eliminating it. I'm just advocating, um... I, I know that I fear a time for the safety of my house, so it's, when I have to pick up, when I have to pick up fireworks remnants from my yard, that I have no idea where they come from, because there wasn't anybody in my neighborhood shooting them, or on my street shooting them. That, that causes concern for me, so.
I, I think the trouble I ran into with the telephone calls I got was it's like they expected me, City Commissioner, to go out and deal with the problem, and they hadn't called the police department yet. And so that was my call them.
I'm not opposed, I mean, to having a conversation about it again. I mean, of course, my issue every year is with the folks that don't listen to the rules. And those people never end up, I mean, they're the same people that usually never listen to the rules and, you know, shoot them all night, or disrespectful to their neighbors. And so I don't know if we're going to be able to fix that, but I'm not opposed to conversation.
Well, I guess I'm interested in some of the information that's been gathered in the past. Maybe this is something that we could talk about at our next work session meeting shortly, or at least have that information in time for that.
Do you have some information from other cities around and there?
Yeah.
That would be interesting.
And then we can just, yeah, I think so too. And then we can decide what we want to go... I just wanted to try and pull the topic out of the emotion of Fourth of July.
Yeah.
And have a discussion that's, that's maybe not so charged, no pun intended.
And, and prior commissions have done the same thing. And, and, and so, very consistent theme.
Okay.
Lots of phone calls right before the Fourth, in anticipation. And then the commission is usually dealt, has usually had conversations about it.
Well, for me, and maybe the new commissioners can be reminded or, or educated on what's been done in the past, and we can decide what we want to do forward. Is that...
That sounds good to me.
And if I can have it by next Wednesday, I will.
Okay. The other thing, update for parks and rec plan, the, the long-range plan that they're working on. Do we know when that final copy's coming to us, or when the rec department will see that? What's...
We, we, we've seen it, the rec board has seen it this last meeting once, and I think we're going to have another conversation. Because like what we kind of discussed the other weekend, last weekend, was it last weekend we were together? Anyways, that there are some things in there that are just a bit off the wall.
Right.
And so I think we're going to have a little discussion as the rec board in our next meeting about some of that. And then I assume shortly after that it'll be coming to us.
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I would welcome, if any of you have any thoughts about any of that now, that I could maybe share at the rec meeting to kind of get some of that maybe trimmed out, or, I don't know, I'd be happy to share that.
When is your next, next rec meeting?
I want to say is it next, not next one.
I think it's the third Thursday, isn't it?
Wow, when is it?
I think it's usually the third week of the month.
And I think it's on Thursday. I can look, it's on my phone.
Third Thursday?
I don't know. I wait until Molly calls.
And I think we can, we'll go ahead and forward your discussion bullets to Kevin. Actually, Kevin got them today, so he can share some of your thoughts from your retreat. He can share those already.
Yeah, and if you had any more after the retreat or after reviewing it, I mean, I think it would be great for us to share that in that rec meeting and kind of just get some feedback amongst everyone before it comes to us, because of course we can do it several times, but...
Wednesday, the nineteenth.
And what time is that? Is it seven?
Four thirty.
Four thirty.
That's what my phone says.
Five thirty here.
Yeah, I think it's five thirty now.
Okay.
For the last two have been.
Okay.
At five thirty.
I don't mind, I mean, just reading.
Thank you. That's all I've got. So next on our agenda is the City Manager's Report.
I wanted to show you, um, the, this is the twenty-four month bond buyer's guide. And it's historically how people, how people, what people are paying for interest. And you can see it on your screen. Last week, we did ours. The rest of the country was paying three point eight percent, and I think we locked in at one point eight. So as we talk about working hard to, um, implement and keep and maintain good financial practices, we borrowed for half of what everyone else is. And so I thought this was kind of interesting, and I'd show it to you and say kudos to staff for doing a good job. And then we also heard, um, we got award from Relay for Life for the last, for supporting their last Relay for Life. Got this, and we'll hang this up in the city, and those are the only two things. Oh, Suzie has something.
Well, before Suzie starts, what, just for the interest of those watching, tell us what goes into, other than financial performance, what else are the indicators for such a low rate? Is it debt-to-asset ratio also?
Well, part of, part of our double A rating is all of the financial aspects of the city. So, um, percent of debt to revenue, percent of legal debt limit, um, reserves, financial management, debt, debt policy, finance policy. So all the policies we have that guide us in our day-to-day decisions go into that.
Okay, thank you.
I got one question for you.
Yes, sir.
When are you going to take Oak Street to gravel?
As, as soon as you'll let me. I'd love to, um, it's getting worse. The, I, I think it needs to go. You know, we had a petition out, we haven't got it back yet, but it's, it's awful. And, um, I'm, I'm ready to start doing the work.
So how far are you going to go, all the way to Eighth Street to Twelfth, or?
I'm going to start on the south end.
At Eighth?
It's, is it a little further south than Eighth? Around Eighth, Seventh? I think that's where the concrete ends, and that's where...
Seventh is where the new street starts.
So we'd start there and work, work our way north. I'd start, and I'd, I'd probably go to the train tracks, and then, um, there are some other patches on Tenth and Eighth. Tenth's, Tenth really bad that needs to go to gravel. And as I was driving around over the weekend, I was noticing that a lot of our gravel roads are really a lot nicer drive than some of our old chip seal roads like Oak. But as you know, driving, if you go to work on Twelfth Street, the piece from Twelfth to the train tracks, you don't have to have four-wheel drive, but it doesn't hurt anything.
As far as the petition, you have a...
I have not heard any more about it.
Okay.
The petition would be to pave, to pave Oak. So we're thinking gravel is a temporary fix. We're not, that's not a permit, permit solution for that street?
I don't think it is. I think that, um, it's just, it's, the city's street policy has three options, and that's one of them. And we can do a better job of maintaining a surface that's gravel than we can one that doesn't have good bays. But specifically from Twelfth to the train tracks, that's a truck route. And so, um, that, that needs to be thick concrete. And so, um, yeah, I'd, I'd love it to be the first step. And it, and I guess I think if we did it, once we did it, we'd start talking in more earnest about how we fix it. But that, the, the piece from Twelfth South to train tracks is truck route, you know that. And, um, and there's, there's no base. I mean, underneath the chip seal is nice clay that, when it hydrates, moves under a truck. So something needs to be done, and, and we can do a better job with gravel than we can with what we have.
When that plant was Coke, Coke offered to, to fix that road and put it in a ten-year plan. And you weren't the city manager, and it was turned down, because they didn't want to let Coke run that road. And so that's how it ended up. They said the city would maintain it, and that's how it wound up. So, but, uh, so you're going to want a concrete from, from the turn-in to where the BNSF is, all the way to Twelfth? Okay?
It's, it's such a short run, and you know this, trucks in turning radiuses are so hard on warm asphalt that I love, and it's uphill. I don't like trucks on asphalt on uphill, so I think it ought to be poured concrete.
And how wide would it be?
I, I don't, I don't see any reason for it to be wider than a regular city street. Do you, Scott?
No, I don't.
So that's thirty-two foot curb to curb, thirty-three?
Thirty-one.
Huh?
Thirty-one feet.
So the price that I saw, was that just for the concrete going back to Twelfth Street, or is that for the whole thing?
That, that was the entire Oak Street, the price you saw.
Okay.
How's Towanda Street coming?
It's, it's looking more like a road every day. I went down it last week, and they were doing bays. And they had the strings up. Have they poured concrete yet?
They haven't. We, we still have a little bit of, um, storm sewer to put in down around Grand Park. Lots of big inlet structures to take the water off the new road, and lots of large pipes. So there's a little bit of that work left. Dirt grade, uh, you know, rough grade is done on a majority of it from Frederick to Grand Park. So that'll follow up with a aggregate base. And then you'll see the curb and gutter come right behind that, and then we'll see the black stuff go down. And it'll, it'll, it'll be a nice, nice finish. This project has encountered a lot of rain, really slowed it down for quite a while. And then this second phase, there is just a lot of pipe, there's a lot of pipe, so it's taken a long time to get that all in the ground. It, it's, it's always, uh, it's always interesting building, rebuilding a brand-new road in a old, developed neighborhood, because you find all kinds of things you don't know that were there. And, uh, so we've had, we've had some of those hurdles, but we've got through them all.
We could post a police officer there, because I imagine it's a nice, smooth street. There was speeding there when it was a rough street, so, just saying. Okay. Suzie, you had something to share?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that our Public Works Secretary has worked very hard to get all of the holiday trash schedules up on the website. And that people can go on, um, our website, EldoKS.com, and sign up to be alerted when their trash schedule is going to change. And that'll be especially important with Labor Day coming up here soon. So if anybody is having troubles with that or has trouble remembering, which I'm sure I would, they can sign up on the website. And that alert can go to their email or their cellphone or both. So she worked hard on that, and hopefully it'll be utilized.
Thank you, Darcy.
Yeah. Maybe we could do the same thing with fireworks regulations from, from June. People could get alerted for what they are.
Tell them, Mary Martha Good.
Okay, I don't have anything else after that. Anything, any more from the City Manager?
No, but Mary Martha did model.
I, I, I saw.
In the show, and so that was...
She's a regular at the Frontier Western.
That was wild.
All right, an entertaining motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned five to zero. Thank you.